Good evening and welcome to the June 1st, 2020, virtual council meeting. And at this time, can we rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
Which is.
A nation.
One nation.
Under God. Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes, here.
Mezak.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Cochi.
Here.
Sphinx.
Here.
And Janudas.
Here.
Thank you. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of May 18th, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Sphinx, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Thank you. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 18th, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Mezak, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
And under old business, we have ordinance number 9789-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Burton Scott Contractors LLC for the Forbes Road resurfacing, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and declaring it an emergency. It's our wish to do the third reading, to have a motion for suspension by Sphinx, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx. Janudas.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Rhodes, second by Mezak. Mike?
This is for the resurfacing of Bedford's portion of Forbes Road. We had applied for a 50-50 split with the county. It is a county roadway. Our, our share would be about $117,000. We are addressing the concrete near the intersection of Norfield and Forbes, and then we're extending that back a little bit further to where it flares into the, goes back into one lane. We are, Councilman Saunders did bring up the concerns as far as where that it is connected, and we're going to be looking into that and assuring that as far as engineering and design, as well as during our pre-con, we will address, address that with the contractor.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
No.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
And ordinance number 9790-20. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to contract with Chagrin Valley paving, excuse me, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please. By Lou Hardy, second by Sphinx. Call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
We need motion for third and final by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, these expenses, Chagrin Valley is the, based on the bidding, lowest and most responsive. $289,000 is the remaining portion minus our cost of Forbes Road for the 2020 road program. Originally, we had this road program budgeted around $600,000, but due to budget cuts, we did cut that back down to $400,000. This also includes partial grant dollars and reimbursement that we received from Coward County that'll cover additional crack ceiling.
Any questions? If not, clerk, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Mezak.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochi.
Yes.
Sphinx.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Before we get into our reports, we just need to take a moment and say our thoughts about what happened this past weekend and the events that took place through town. A protest is always a good thing. It's a necessary thing. It's the right thing to do. It's when it gets out of hand and we have people coming from out of state to stir things up, then it's no longer a protest. And that, and that takes away from the dignity, not the dignity, but what did happen to the, to the gentleman there in in Minnesota and it's just so sad what did happen. No excuse for it. We're not going to make any excuses. I know police I've talked to have, you know, no sympathy for the officer that got charged. It was just a horrible, horrible incident and and we want to respect that, the rights of that individual and it's right to have us give the proper protests and other ways that people have shown respect, whether it's silent gatherings or whatever they've had. And that's, that's a good thing. It's part of the healing and right now, we're far from healing, but the, the thing we don't need is more vandalism, things like that. Just take away from the, the whole meaning of this horrible situation and I would hope that that calms down. And I understand when people are angry, but but please, let's, let's all keep our heads and do the proper honor to the situation. Yes, Heather?
I just wanted to add, we had a, a young adult here in Bedford create a perfectly wonderful protest towards this, Gabby Holtz on Tarbell. I just want to tell her that I very much appreciate her effort. It was a beautiful memorial to, to lives that have been lost during these type of conflicts. And, and I think it was absolutely appropriate without getting violent, and I very much appreciate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. And with that, we'll get into our reports. Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items that I wanted to touch on. I did want to give an update. I know last year, for those of you that remember, we did lose our K-9, our officer and our new K-9 that is replacing Officer Mike, did begin training last week, so in the coming months, we will have our second K-9 unit back. They've been, those units are a tremendous asset to, to the public and to our community, so hopefully they'll be, you know, back soon. And once they complete the training. We did our new engine that we recently purchased and took delivery of in the fire department that is in service, went in service today. So that's a good thing. Obviously, we got two new fantastic pieces of equipment. And I want to commend Chief Nagy and all the staff that put a lot of time in partnering with the design. What we need for those two pieces of equipment. They, they put in a lot of work on that. And when you see the, the new vehicles, they definitely show, so kudos to them. I do want to send additional condolences to the family and friends of the young man that passed away last week down near Bayard Park in the Glens. It was a tragedy. And if you didn't get a chance, if anybody did not get a chance to see the video, a news story, our police helped, put, helped with one of the news channels. You know, it really was about safety and we get it, you know, people are, you know, there's things to do and everybody's looking to get out or even swim. But I urge you that that is not the place to swim. We have had over 10 rescues over the last decade, multiple fatalities, and the signage is up and I urge you not to go in the water there, please. I do want to commend our safety forces, specifically our fire department. You know, they, as always, professionals, they knew what needed to get done. They were acting as quickly as possible. They were able to make rescues. And I commend them for that, but I did want to offer the condolences to the family and again, please stay out of the water nearby Bayard Park in the Glens. I wanted to say thank you to everybody that participated and helped with the Memorial Day remem, remem, remembrance video, specifically the BDA. I, I think it turned out, I think it turned out great and it was, you know, kudos to all of Bedford and it's something everybody can be proud of. Couple different, quick reminders. You know, some of the orders were extended through the state. Our playground equipment does remain closed. All of the events on the square through June have either been canceled or postponed. And the public gatherings, the, the more than 10 people is still in effect, so please do our best with social distancing. I do know that our recreation staff has been eagerly looking at creative ways and creative programs to roll out that coincide with the, the orders that we are all following and the social distancing. Look for that information to come out in the near future. Especially, we will be making a decision on the municipal pool. That decision will most likely be coming in the next seven to 10 days. But also look for some of these new programs that the staff are planning. They got a bunch of great ideas and, you know, we're definitely trying to focus on what we can do and not so much what we can't. So look for that information and follow us on social media. We will have all that information out there soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gamozy.
Yes, we had some, I could talk about a little bit on updates of our tax procedures that are coming up in line with COVID and where we're at today. Because of the COVID, it presents a challenge to our workplace and filing returns. However, we can accomplish this in a non-personal contact environment in our best interests of the public health and welfare of our employees, so continuing to close the tax department window and ceasing all the in-person tax preparation of the city income tax returns throughout this filing season. However, with this outbreak in social distancing, we can also promote our online tax preparation system that's on the website of BedfordOH.gov and under the heading of the tax department and filing a tax return online, many of the people can file that way and pay any tax balance dues online. When submitting the tax returns on the online system only, the city of Bedford will not require the W-2s or the 1099 forms to be afforded to us this year, unless of course you're requesting a refund or instructed to submit these documents for verification purposes by our tax department personnel. Perhaps there might be an error on the return. But please do not place the tax papers or tax returns in the parking lot water box, but we have something else for you. So second though, the department will continue to provide the city tax preparation assistance though on the behalf of the residents when the documents are either sent to the address of the tax department, city of Bedford, and we have it, this posted online at the P.O. Box 72450 in Cleveland, Ohio, 44192. Now what that is, that's our lockbox facility. The papers would go there. It sits for about a day before we get that back. We would be able to get that information, prepare the returns and be able to bill you, and I'll get to that in a minute on time so that payments can be timely. Now, the timely filing of the payments are due, filing and payments are due by Wednesday, July 15th, 2020 at 4:30 PM. Now, when requesting tax preparation assistance from the city's tax department to be timely and filing, they'll need to submit all these forms to the tax department as stated earlier to that address during the month of June 2020. This allows the city to prepare the returns in June and send a timely billing out to the public in early July. Therefore, they're able to pay the bill by July 15th. Now, if that doesn't work, we also have a Dropbox inside City Hall, right in the tax department window. The window won't be open, but you'd be able to slide the envelope with your W-2s in there. Sooner the better. Get those in in June, and if so, we'll be able to process those returns again, get the billings out by the beginning of July and have the ability for you to pay on a timely manner. If however, those papers come in on City Hall, we've been holding off a day before we will touch those payments and paperwork for processing. So keep in mind, you're going to have to be at least a day or two earlier to get those papers processed in the next couple of days after they're deposited with us. Penalties will be assessed on July 16th, 2020 as required by law. All right. So I just hope that helps everybody. We're still there for everybody to prepare the returns, but they have to be done in a different method, sending it directly to the lockbox, which we have advertised online. Also, they can come into City Hall, just drop it off. Don't linger. We're not going to be there going one-on-one or face-to-face with people. Just drop it off. We'll prepare it and get that back out to you. And then we'll be able to, if it's in June, we're going to be able to get that out, get bills to you and have timely payments for everybody and filing. So if we do that, things are working very well so far with our staff, with our processing. I don't see where this will be an issue at all for this year by July 15th. So please follow those rules and we'll be glad to take care of everybody. That's the end of my report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Montello, our law director.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I just wanted to tell everybody, you know, I'm sorry about what's happening in the world today and urge everybody to remain calm and use their heads. I want to thank our vets for their service. Since we didn't get a chance to do so on Memorial Day. Well, I mean, we did, but I, I didn't get a chance to thank them on Memorial Day, so thank them. And the courts are up and running and just wanted, they're back to almost full speed. It's, it's a little bit slow, but it, but it's but they are up and running. So if you have any questions or need anything, don't hesitate to contact me. Be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy.
Thank you. I got, the courts are slow. All we need to get out there and catch some of these people going through these stop signs and everything else. Probably help. By the way, Mike, I think they do need to get out with that motorcycle I'm sure is out on the road now. I haven't seen it up and down the streets here, but it would really help. And I also want to ask you a question again, Mike, actually two questions. Union Street, we were talking about a little earlier with the new, with pavement that was supposed to get done. Updates on that at all?
Joe Chuni reached out to the engineer's office and is waiting to hear back. So we are waiting. We reached out to them. And, and again, I, I had indicated I did submit a letter in January, beginning of the year, which I did not get a response, but Joe contacted the engineer's office and I'll let you know that response.
Okay. Yeah, and I need to see him anyhow, and I'll talk to you later on that. Joe I'm talking about. Also, the San Bernardo, any updates on them?
They're moving along. They were on a skeleton crew. The lower buildings open, but they're still working to finish the upper part of the building and we don't have a timeline yet on completion.
Okay. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mezak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for leading off with your commentary about this weekend event. And then when Heather mentioned the lady by her, I didn't realize that we had some demonstration here in our city. I wish I would have known and I could have probably been there just to support her if it was done right, and I'm sure it was the way she complimented the lady. We've seen a lot in our time. What happened was very unfortunate and I believe that the loss of control of this, the protesters and destruction left a bad taste in a lot of people's mouth about our downtown Cleveland area. We all know downtown is our downtown and when it escalated and things happened like that, I just, everybody was beside themselves. I had a person that called me was crying actually to say, did you see what happened? And it's a shame. We will mend from this. I would like to pay my respects to the gentleman that passed and his family, and I know that his family didn't expect all this to happen. And we have to move on and swallow our pride and work together and be together and respect one another. I think this is the best thing to do. We lost that lack of respect and it's got to come back some way, some way and somehow, and it better be soon, I would hope. I have two things, two other things. The video for, for Memorial Day was very, very special to a lot of people. The commemoration of all our veterans and people that were a part of this, I want to say thank you. I want to thank Jim Wagner for all his time and Heather for her thought about doing the, a virtual Memorial Day and all of us in council and everybody that participated in this video to make someone happy. Over the weekend, I went over to visit our newest business and my only business in, in Ward 4, which is the Sonoco dealership. It's called Hop In. I met the owner and the first thing out of his mouth was to say, thank our city manager for coming down and seeing me personally. He appreciated that. We spent quite a bit of time yesterday. We had, you know, broke a little bread talking and we expect you'll have good, a lot of the residents will patronize him instead of going somewhere else. The gas is at $1.99 right now, so it's still a little bit cheap. So we're doing okay. Mike, I need to know about a follow-up on the sinkhole at 8 Broon, Mr. Hudson's place. I don't know if we had any feedback on that yet. I've been waiting to hear. I haven't gotten a call from him. I saw where he more or less fenced in the area where the sinkhole is in the yard. I don't believe it's on our, it's not our liability, but like I told him, we could, you would talk to him in regards to it. So if you have any follow-up, could you please let me know?
Yeah, I will let you know once they get out there. I know they are working on two sinkholes. One on Broadmoor and another, I believe, on West Glendale. I had in the memo. And Sean was going to be stopping out to talk to the gentleman at Broon. So once, once he does that, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
I appreciate that. And that's the end of my report for tonight. Just want to say we have to be strong and stay strong and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes, so thank you everyone for coming. I was muted. I apologize. Zoom stuff, you know. So I want to start out, I, I mentioned earlier when the mayor had talked about protests. I, I really do want to commend Gabby Holtz for her very dignified protest against this whole thing that's been going on with the police and this gentleman. It was a, it, it was truly the type of protest I like to see. It was eye-catching. It definitely made people stop and think, but it, it was not something that, that tore apart our community. It brought our community together. So thank you very much, Ms. Holt. I appreciate your effort to that effect. You made your statement and, and you made it without hurting anyone else. And I think that's really important for this is, is that we make our point without hurting anybody else. I also wanted to let everyone know, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who placed an order for our garden club online plant sale. We ended up with just over $4,000 in sales, $1,100 in profit for the club as well as 117 orders and nine amazing volunteers. To the volunteers that helped us with that online sale and, and helping us to deliver all of those orders in, in three days. Thank you. You guys did great. And thank you to everyone who placed an order and helped support us. This was a weird year. Yes, it was not as, as great. Normally, we make about 2,000 to 2,500 for our plant sale. This year, we made 1,100, but it was certainly way better than zero, which is what we were facing. So thank you for all of your support. Thank you for all of your volunteering. We really appreciate that. The Memorial Day video, the Bedford Downtown Alliance, would like to thank everyone who came out. Jim, I know you, you're there. They can see your picture. Jim was just really, without Jim, Jim Wagner, you can see his picture down there. He's our videographer for the city. He also volunteered to be videographer for the Memorial Day video. It has, at this point in time, 1,100 views, which like creams anything that we have in this terms of videos, in terms of views. I think a lot of people really appreciated it. I have heard nothing but positive comments. And, and I appreciate everyone who came out to help make that video. I appreciate everyone who coordinated that video. In particular, everyone on council, thank you so much for being a leader in, in this. It was, we really needed having one of you come to, to make your video message for that, and I think the entire community appreciated it as well. So thank you so much. All right. And if you didn't get to watch the Memorial Day video, it is available to watch at BedfordOH.gov/Memorial-2020. So if you want to watch it again, please go and, and watch it there. Or you can just go visit the city's YouTube channel, which is what we're on right now. You can go there. It's there. I would recommend that while you're there, you go down here, let's see if I can get my finger to up here. Go down, down there, down below, and, and there's a button that says subscribe. Subscribe and you'll get to know whenever a video appears for the city of Bedford, whether it be our really cool Memorial Day video or it be a city council video or, or just a message from the mayor or the city manager, it, it all appears there. So subscribe and you get to be informed. I also would like to thank the city of Bedford for joining with Bedford Downtown Alliance. I know that these times are different and it's weird. Thank you for, for taking the opportunity to support something out of the box. I know that not everyone was really happy about the fact that we couldn't have our parade, but we got to have something. And, and thank you for supporting that something. I think during these times, that something is better than nothing. Uh, I think during these times that something is better than nothing. And, and I think that in terms of what we did with that Memorial Day video, that was a whole lot of something. And thank you for that. I really appreciate that. All right. So we get to the fun stuff. Uh, see my, my, my sign back here?
Yeah.
Yay! Uh, that idea that we're not going to let things be canceled. First Fridays are back this Friday and you can enjoy them from home. You could be at home and enjoy a nice little dance party. We are going to have a Zoom dance party. Everybody logs in. We got a DJ. We're going to do some line dancing. We're going to have some fun. It's something to do with the kids at home. On top of it, we are still going to be providing free meals. So, uh, we're, we're only going to have 100 available. They will be available at the train station between six and seven PM. All you have to do, drive up. The meals will be packaged. Take them home. You can have your hot dogs and chips and drink at home while you dance with our dance party at seven PM. So free meal at six to seven, dance party seven to whenever we end, which will probably be, you know, like hours and hours because we have so much fun. Uh, we do have the ability to accommodate up to 200, uh, people on Zoom. I would encourage every family in Bedford to, to log in. It's something to do on a Friday night. Come pick up a free meal. Come home. Your whole evening is taken care of. And during these times of, of sort of uncertainty, there's something you can do that's fun and, and almost normal. So, uh, and, uh, that is all I have. Thank you very much for joining us. I appreciate it. Uh, you guys have been great during this whole time. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes. First off, I want to thank all our safety services for our, uh, tragic event that occurred down at our Tinker's Creek again. Uh, I don't know how many times, uh, something's happened down there since I was a little kid. It always seems like every year or two, something always happens there. But I want to thank all those that helped at least, uh, bring out some of those people. And fortunately, only one, uh, was a tragic end. But I have a question for Mike on the same topic. Uh, is Metro Parks monitoring the kayakers that are going through there? Cause just because you're in a kayak doesn't mean you can't get caught in one of those undercurrents.
Uh, Don, I don't know if they're monitoring it, like they don't have someone down there constantly monitoring it. They're, to our knowledge, I, I know they're aware of it because the mayor and I, um, we were at a meeting a couple of years ago and we actually shared, um, some of the information to a couple of rangers. Uh, there's actually a YouTube channel of some kayakers going through there. So we did share that. I don't know if they, um, I'm certain they don't staff it regularly, uh, but we did share that information. And they did install, um, you know, following the, the last tragedy, uh, you know, we spoke to the Metro Parks. We urged, um, additional signage. They, they put additional signage up. Um, you know, we got to do our best to try to continue to inform the public. It's not a place to go swim. It's definitely, it's just too dangerous.
Well, I think they think there is, since they're in a kayak, they're safe. Now, if they were on the lower end of it, yeah, that's one thing. But through this area, there are whirlpools and undercurrents that are hidden and especially when the water is a little bit more rapid than the, and that's when they seem to get out there. And that's dangerous. Uh, all right. Uh, I wanted to make a quick statement too on, I'm not against the Forbes Road resurfacing project. In fact, I'm really glad to see they're going to replace the concrete up by the VFW end of it because that asphalt, if they'd have put it down, would have been rumpled and no time flat. So they put in what's actually called a bus pad type of pavement where it keeps it from rumbling because there are a lot of heavy trucks on that road. Uh, it's 18 years today that I've actually retired from the county, county engineer's office. And back over 20 years ago, the county was well aware that Forbes Road pavement even back then was in bad shape. Uh, when Forbes Road was replaced through the Broadway intersection, that nine, nine inch pavement that is not sufficient by today's standards for the truck traffic was actually increased to 13 inches through that area. And they said that they were, were well aware of the fact that they were going to have to replace that pavement at some time. So personally, doing one lane on an asphalt when you don't even, you can't even guarantee that the longitudinal joint where they're going to meet in the area that isn't done, I feel is, uh, poor engineering. And I hate to say it, it's a waste of money. So I can't consciously have voted yes on that. So even though they did improve some of the areas, like I said, by putting in the concrete down at the far end by Northfield Road. So let's hope that someday, uh, ever since the change in the county government, that office is now run by a non-engineer. And that's a bad thing to begin with too. So, uh, they need to, I would say, restructure that office and put the people who know what they're doing in charge instead of just doing it politically. So, uh, that's my comment on that one. Thank you. And everybody have, well, actually the next thing would have been too is this weekend would have been the Ripford Burnoff. And it's going to be a shame that, uh, we're, we're going to actually have a weekend without anything there either. And at the same time, the following weekend would have normally been the Strawberry Festival. So this would have been the most popular time in town with all our festivals going on. And it's unfortunate that yesterday they actually canceled the rescheduled Strawberry Festival in September. So it looks like we're going to have, uh, a summer with not too many activities going on. So the city's looking at things, hopefully that we can get some things going as far as the criteria for distancing and whatnot. But, uh, this is going to be a dry spell this summer and hopefully everything comes back in full force again for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Uh, Strawberry Festival, I am on the board and the vice president had a meeting, um, earlier this week, uh, with, uh, Betsy Lee, which is the president of the Historical Society and the director, Elmer. And we decided just because it takes a lot of work that goes into it. And we were going to combine the Strawberry Festival and the Celebration of Art together in September. But with the guidelines still being, had talked to someone in Columbus and it looked like the six feet and the listing, all that would still be in effect. Well, how can you do a festival or an art show, um, with those guidelines? So whether to, instead of waiting to the last minute or waiting to August and then having to refund money, um, we decided that it was, uh, the three committee members decided that it was the best, um, to do. It was a very hard decision. We have come up with a couple of other ideas that we're going to be doing, uh, via Zoom, um, to still because what a lot of people don't realize, so that, that took, it, uh, took a big hit, our Historical Society, is because we depend on our first event is the reverse raffle that is in March, that revenues quite a bit of money. Then followed up our strawberry is the festival is a big festival. We revenue a lot of money with that. We have a flea market, revenues, nothing has been out of that. And then the Celebration of Art the last couple of years have been, has been good. So those events that helps run, that's our, our, our revenue for our, and other little things that we have, programs that we have at the Historical Society. So we depend on that. So it's, it's looking a little scary for our Historical Society, for our museum. And how I'm looking at it, it's not considered essential, but it is. Our Historical Society is essential to keeping our history alive in our beautiful downtown historic district. It's very essential. And with that, the, the Historical Society, we're asking if you can, you know, be a membership or help us out, um, please do so because we're dependent on that because it's, uh, times are, are very tough for us and the upkeep of the building, the same thing. Um, we were able to get a small grant, but that, I mean, that does not, uh, color things. So, um, just please, if you've enjoyed going to these events down in that or going into the museum, we've got awesome things there, awesome volunteers, a lot of people that put a lot of hard work, you know, the volunteers that, uh, so I just asked that you, uh, we're making a donation and helping out the Historical Society. Um, and look forward to, like I said, we're going to try to come up with something, um, to get the doors open. Um, also talking about the Memorial Day Parade, Heather and Jim, thank y'all again. That was awesome. Um, when I got home, I took a weekend trip, uh, got home on Memorial Day and, um, I was in the backyard, heard all this honking and everything. Of course, South Village is in my backyard and the, there was a parade around, it's a circle that goes around the, uh, the nursing home. And in the lead of the parade was this resident, I believe, 96, I'm not real sure how old he is, but he had his uniform on. He was in his electric wheelchair, had the flags up and he was leading this little small car parade. And they ran around about six times and the residents, some of the residents have little screen-in porches. And after it was over, of course, I went out and I filmed it from, um, in my backyard. And when it was over with the young gentleman and the lady that's, uh, one of the directors there, she was driving the van. Um, they had shown the video of the memorial, um, tribute that, uh, that the city did. And they, the resident says, the men and women that served country or had lost relatives or had memories of, she thought that that was so respectful and such a great thing to do because a lot of them that are in the nursing homes do not get to attend things like that. And of course, right now it would be, would have been very dangerous for them to do it. So they said that that just was such a proper way to remember our fallen heroes. And it was such a respectful way not to just, you know, and they, they really, really liked it and appreciated it. And, um, I did too. Let's see, Mike, sinkhole on Greencroft near the park. There's a pretty nasty sinkhole by the, uh, park on Greencroft. It has a big orange, uh, cone in it, but, uh, it is pretty nasty looking. And if you're coming that way, which a lot of cars, we've been having a lot of speeding on Greencroft. And today, when I was doing my work check, I had two cars fly by me passing. So that's not cool. And there was a stop sign. So this was, it was a little bit, it was probably about one o'clock, something like that. Um, there's also been a lot of complaints, Flora, there's people speaking down on Flora, passing people, um, Willard, Greencroft, um, uh, of course, Grant, you know, the stop signs mean nothing. I think they, I'm trying to think of what the S stands for, speaking down, what the TOP stands for, but I don't think it stands for stop. But, uh, they're passing. I got, uh, had resident call me today. She, uh, got past her, um, on Grant, almost, almost hit. And, um, it was very scary. Also asking residents, if you put out mattresses, make sure, I guess there's been a lot of move outs and things going on right now, please wrap those mattresses because Kimball will not pick, pick them up. Um, Mike, I've also noticed I've, I've sent you some stuff, um, a lot of move outs over the weekend and they just pile their trash on the tree lawn. Of course, trash doesn't pick up till Tuesday. So the poor neighbors across the way have to look at all the trash on the tree lawn. Also I noticed, um, the parks are still closed, the playgrounds are still closed. We're getting a lot of gatherings, which, you know, I'm all for the, the visiting in your car, you know, that's fine. But when you throw trash out and you litter our parks, it's not cool. It's not cool at all. Um, so, um, I know I had talked to you last week, Mike, about that, to address that. Um, I guess that's about it. Um, also wanted to give a big thank you for the young lady, Gabby, that did the, um, protest, the peaceful protest. I, I think that's great. I had the opportunity, which most of y'all know that my youngest son is a police officer and he was just, he's absolutely just appalled by what happened. Um, to know it's to the, the family, my heart just breaks. Um, I have a biracial nephew and niece and it scares me death. My nephew, um, it just, it scares me. And, uh, and, uh, fearful for my son when he pulls someone over because he's wearing a, a police uniform. It's to save that fear of, you know, your children, no matter how old they are. So it's just, it's time to stop what happened, uh, this weekend downtown was just deplorable. And it started out to be such a good thing. I had things that were down there. And it was, started out to be a peaceful thing. It's something that needs to be done. It's time for this to, to stop. It has to stop. And then you have these people that just thinks it's okay. And then our beautiful downtown area and I, I just, it would break, I just, I would be so glad that our city didn't have that at Bedford because I would just cringe to have that happen to our downtown. And the Playhouse Square, and now these people that have just got back or still, some of them haven't opened up to have to go through this. I, I know that a broken glass window is not comparison to someone losing their life at all. I am not saying that. That's, that's, there's no comparison. Um, but this virus has been just really bad. And then to have this happen at the same time is just atrocious. So, um, prayers for that family and, uh, with that, the end of, uh, report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. No report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Um, I just want to point out the gentleman's name there in Minnesota was George Floyd, uh, just so we can remember him by name. He does have a name and, uh, and like I said, our sympathies to his family. And, uh, also I'd like to say, uh, give a little shout out to a new friend I just made tonight, uh, Aeneas Matey. He's a Cub Scout working to get his government badge to move on to Boy Scouts. And, uh, I had the pleasure of him coming in and interviewing me and asking me some tough questions. So it was as funny. And he's also a neighbor. So, uh, it was, it was a good thing. And, you know, good to see a young man involved with scouts and hopefully he'll go on and, uh, get into Eagle Scout and on to bigger and better things. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to Aeneas. And, uh, with that, let's move on. Ordinance number 9791-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Narone and Sons, Inc. for emergency repairs to the Wood Creek trunk sewer and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by, uh, Flu Harding. Call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Rhodes? Saunders?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather, you're on mute. Heather, mute.
I'm sorry. Very nice of a noise.
Yes, I know. I appreciate that, but we want to hear you when we need to.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And I need a motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike?
This is for, uh, work that needs to get performed along, uh, behind some of the This is for work that needs to get performed along, behind some of the properties along Palmetto, primarily behind 81 Palmetto. Due to some erosion, our main trunk line that heads down to the wastewater plan has been exposed. We do need to get back there and make those repairs. The reason the ordinance indicates not to exceed 80, there potentially will be some repairs due to the fact that we have to access the location through a resident's yard and our law director is going to be working on creating a temporary easement so we can get back there. We did receive three separate quotes and we bid this or requested the quotes based on time and material. And based on that, Narone can start right away and we believe that it will be less than that. And that's why they have done other emergency work with us prior. And we'd like to get this going as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9792-20. An ordinance amending section 178.10 entitled Penalty, Interest, Fees, and Charges, specifically subsection H of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bedford and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Saunders.
I'll take that there. In regards to this order, it's a clarification ordinance. We had referred to payments earlier as delinquent payments and it was a little confusing for a person to, that they decided that they had a current payment in a current year, delinquent in prior years. So we're going to clarify how payments are apportioned to what fees and so forth in the ordinance as it was originally intended, which we've been following for the last 30 years. What we actually are doing here is any payment, instead of delinquent payment, will be applied back to court costs, attorney fees, principal interest, or, and then finally to the delinquent tax balance or penalties and interest, I should say. This will also take effect prior for issues prior to January 1st of 16 because there were prior laws passed in the state of Ohio prior to that date and after January 1st, 2016. I ask that council look favorably upon this ordinance to clarify that language.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Thank you.
And ordinance number 9793-20. An ordinance declaring the property and structure located at 96 John Street, permanent parcel number 814-11-040, a nuisance and therefore condemning the property, ordering action, and declaring an emergency. And I have a motion for suspension by Mezak, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been trying to address this property for years. Back in, our inspectors have been out there multiple times this year. We actually issued a condemnation order in April. That work was not completed. Any work that has been done has been minimal at best. And to be quite frank, the most recent was not done properly and we did have to place a stop work order. By passing this legislation, you're therefore, we would be condemning the property and ordering action. We are working to obtain quotes for potential demolition. We did receive one quote from TRW Construction for the amount of $8,760. We did perform a lien and title search and we are taking the next, the steps necessary to try to address this property.
Thank you. Questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're coming to the hearing of citizens. I neglected to give the email address out. Mike, would you give that now, please?
Yes, we did include it as well on some of our information pieces that we did send out earlier today. And again, that email is citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Again, citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Any questions or comments, feel free to send those over. And just to clarify, Mayor, we did not have any that have come over today. I know in years, or the past couple of meetings, we did have some come in throughout the day who were anticipating the meeting and we did read those, but we have not had any yet.
Okay, well, we can wait a few minutes because of not getting that out there in time.
I could say, Mike, a question I've gotten a lot lately is about where the pool stands.
The pool and as I, as I did, let me pull some of my information here. We anticipate making a decision on the pool in the next seven to 10 days. Obviously, there's definitely would be some, some challenges, to say the least. We are, excuse me, real quick. I put my stuff back over from work session. Recreation Department and myself have been communicating about these, these topics for weeks, actually prior to that. It takes the pool, it takes us about three weeks to get the pool ready to open. Pool costs somewhere, you know, between 175 and $200,000 annually to get it up and running and staff. You know, we have looked at the orders, we have looked at what would be required. Obviously, it would be difficult in order to conduct the pool or open the pool. We would definitely be, have a limit per people. You know, on a, on a good summer day, we probably have about 150 residents in the pool area. Based on our deck size and being able to, or having to require social distancing, we would probably be looking at no more than 70 people. It may be a little less than that. And we would probably have about 20 staff members at least. So realistically, the amount of people who could be in there at one time would be probably somewhere between 40 and 50. We were notified that all of the communities that participate in our swim league, the swim league was canceled. Those communities did close their pools. We are waiting to hear on one, one maybe opening. We would not be able to do the one-on-one, you know, swim lessons, the hands-on swim lessons. We do know that the slide would not be able to be functioning. And we know the concession area would not be allowed to be opened and, and serving food and things like that. So it's challenging. I mean, you know, we have our guards and the guards need to be focused on the water. We would, if it does reopen, we would most likely be tasked with having additional staff members solely responsible to make sure that those 40 people are socially distancing. There's a lot of requirements that, you know, county health and the state would require. So we're looking at that. Obviously, we have been for weeks, if not over the last, you know, month and a half, looking at it as, how can we do it? The reality is if we do it, it's going to be very, very different. And to be quite honest, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. We're not making a decision this evening. Like I said, we're probably going to be making a decision in the next seven to 10 days. And then we are also, please stay tuned. There's a lot of great ideas that our staff at the rec department are coming up with in addition to whatever else happens. You know, programs, outdoor programs, virtual programs. We did get a lot of input and I, I would miss to mention this in my report. Thank you to everybody that responded to our survey. That information is very, very helpful, especially the ideas and what you would maybe like, would you feel comfortable attending? Lot of great feedback and, you know, that's important. We had over 300 people, I think, respond. And, you know, that's what we're looking for, your input. So we take that into account when we look at future planning and what programs we are starting right away. And I think there's going to be some exciting things out there. Listen, where there is the, the opportunity of potentially seeing drive-in movies, we may have drive-in concerts. You know, there's, there's some great ideas. So please stay tuned. And again, we hope to make a decision on the pool in the next seven to 10 days. And we're doing our best and obviously we want to consider, you know, what we're used to, but at the same time, we want to consider, you know, obviously the health and safety of all of our residents. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions come in, Mike?
No questions or comments.
With that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Well, thank you all for watching in and thank you, Council, for getting through another one of these Zoom meetings and we'll see you on January 6th.
No. We're going back to normal before January, okay?
John said that was good for him. He'll see you in January.
How about July? Okay. Unless we're needed before.
I was going to mention that, just reminding the public that we are, Council is on summer session. So unless we're needed for other business or, or other business, we'll be meeting beginning of July, beginning of August.
Not January.
All right. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good night, everybody. Take care.
Bye.